From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Gleason.
Yeah.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, November 14th, 2017, meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We are going to begin today's meeting with our flag salute, and that's going to be led by Blake Stevenson. He is the Rosedale Highway Home Depot Department Manager for Building and Lumber, and they're a big sponsor of our Holiday Cottage, and so that will be relevant in just a few moments. And so if you could please stand for the flag salute and remain standing after for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, if you'd like to follow along with our agenda today, they are located in printed format on the tables near the exits, and so all items listed with a CA above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. So at this time, I'm going to read the consent agenda items, starting on page two. Items four, five, and six are on consent. On page three, items nine through 14 are on consent. On page four, items 16 through 20, as well as 22, are on consent. Are there any members of the audience who would like to make any comment on the consent agenda? Mr. Fox, please come forward. Okay, come on, come on forward. We'll ask you to state your name, and you can tell us which item you're interested in, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am Dennis Fox.
Can you raise the mic up a little bit, Mr. Fox?
And I'd like to...
Pull the microphone up just a tad. There we go.
Okay. A little better?
Perfect.
Maybe you don't want to hear it anyway, but anyway. I'd like to talk about 16.
Okay.
Which I have been. I sent you quite extensive stuff on that, from Northern California, and it's kind of a cultural thing. You notice, they see where they get their water from, and we see where we get our water from is them, and it's quite a difference. The fires, and not just the fires, if you don't mechanically remove the trees, the dead trees, you're going to have a problem. First, you have the fires. Not only do you lose the houses and the people there and the habitat, you end up afterwards, the soil gets fried, and then it ends up, has mud going down into the reservoirs and filling them up. Then you have more floods, and they hit the houses down here, like Lamont. And what I was going to bring up is, on the emergency, after you have the flood, what needs to be checked is mold, and the school got pretty well hit out there, and I think the county wouldn't hurt to have, for the county to have a mold sniffer, to check not only the public housing, people's housing, and the schools, for the kids who have not only asthma, but also the, those of us who are a little beyond school age, and we also have problems with breathing and with mold. So that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fox. Any others? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board and ask if any board members would like to remove an item. Otherwise, I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Salute.
I'm sorry, do we have, it looks like we have a comment.
A public comment on something, not on the...
I'm sorry, this isn't the public comment period. This is a comment on the consent agenda.
On the consent agenda?
If you have a public comment on an item that's not on the agenda, that will be coming up under Public Presentations, item seven.
Item seven, okay, I thought we were there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion from Supervisor Couch. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you, and one of the items that we approved on the consent agenda was item number six, and this is the appointment of Joe Ashley as second district member to the Planning Commission. I greatly appreciate him being in the audience and also for his willingness to serve, and so Joe is a resident of the second district, and he also is with California Resources Corporation, and so I know he's going to be a fabulous addition to the Planning Commission and greatly appreciate his willingness to serve. And Joe, if you can go up to the fifth floor, the clerk of the board is ready to administer your oath and provide you with your appointment packet. So thank you so much.
Please.
Welcome aboard. All right, so that will take us back to item number one on the consent agenda under Resolutions and Proclamations. This item is to proclaim November 2017 as Family Caregivers Month, and November 13th through the 17th, 2017, as In-Home Supportive Services Home Care Workers Recognition Week in Kern County, and Supervisor Perez is going to make this presentation.
Thank you, Chairman. Motion on proclamation.
Sir.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Don't be shy. Just come on down. Good to see you guys. Come on down. Welcome. Good to see you. Welcome. Good morning. Hello. Nice to see you. Good to see you all. Come on over. I'll be careful what I do with the camera on. I'll be very cautious. You know me. Excellent. Come on over. Don't be shy. All right, it's good to see everybody this pre-Thanksgiving week. Very good. Where's Lido? Is he, Lido? Oh, there he is, okay. Quite a game we have here. Come on over. Okay, Honorable Chairman and colleagues, I am extremely proud to stand before you today to proclaim the week of November 13th through the 17th, 2017, as In-Home Support Services Home Care Workers Recognition Week. During this season of Thanksgiving, we are reminded to be grateful for all of the care and love we receive from those around us. One of the most profound ways this caring is expressed is through the generous support provided by family caregivers who look after our loved ones who are ill, elderly, or disabled. Here in Kern County, over 3,400, 3,400 in-home support service caregivers provide home care services and support which allow for low-income, disabled, and elderly residents to remain living independently in their homes. In 2005, the California State Legislature voted to proclaim the second week in November as In-Home Support Services Home Care Workers Recognition Week to recognize the time, patience, care, and TLC that these workers give to our loved ones. I hope that we continue to honor these dedicated individuals and always keep in mind the hard work they are giving to help support those most in need in our communities. Thank you, Chairman and colleagues. I have a resolution here to present to Lido. Where, Lido, where are you? Come on over. Welcome. This is a proclamation. Board of Supervisors, County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed November 2017 as Family Caregivers Month and In-Home Supportive Services Home Care Workers Recognition Week in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered into the official board minutes and signed by our Chairman, Zach Scrivner. Lido?
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for allowing this proclamation. The home care workers, IHSS home care workers, do an amazing job of caring for our sick and elderly in this community. They tirelessly work, day in, day out, to make sure that our individuals that they're caring for are able to stay safely in their home, which is a big part of this community. Individuals want to stay home. They prefer to be at home as opposed to being institutionalized, and this program allows them to do that, and without the home care workers behind me, this wouldn't be possible. So thank you to them, and I'd like to turn it over to Sonia. Do you want, oh, Wayman?
Wayman.
Thank you, Chairman Scrivner, distinguished members of the board. It's an honor to accept this proclamation today on behalf of all the home care providers. In some cases, home care providing, home care providers provide for family or non-members who are looking after loved ones to keep them out of institutions. Home care providers give their time, their patience, and their love and support to care for the ill, the elderly, and the disabled. Being a home care provider is not easy. Sometimes, it can be overwhelming, but at the end of the day, we know that we're making a difference in their lives. Again, we thank you for this recognition in honor of all the caregivers in Kern County. Thank you.
We have a picture of all of us together here, Lido. Come on in, everyone. Scoot in. And then we do mine. It's the holidays, we can all get along. Okay, let's go this way. Sure. All right, guys. Selfie time. Hey, you know. There we go. Oh, I will. Thank you. Oh, this way, this way, guys. I'm sorry. Nice job. Okay. God bless you guys. Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. Almost just. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. Okay, next item on our agenda will be item number two, and this will proclaim November 2017 as Diabetes Awareness Month in Kern County, and Supervisor Gleason will make this presentation.
Motion on staff recommendation. Sir. Proclamation.
You have a motion and a second? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, looking forward to getting an agreement. Thank you very much. The honor to speak to you and offer this proclamation for the County of Kern in support of November 2017 as being Diabetes Awareness Month in Kern County, and the certificate says that this recognition has been entered into the official board minutes, signed by the Honorable Chairman Zach Scrivner. This year's theme is Dear Diabetes. Dear Diabetes, diabetes touches many of our families, 3.8 Americans. It affects all age groups, ethnicities, and races, tall, the short, the young, and the old. Our focus is a public education program where we promote reliable, scientific, and evidence-based research, prevention of diabetes, and treatment for the care of our people at risk for diabetes. I have Cynthia Mallett here who's going to give us a little talk or two and let us know some more about diabetes prevention, and thank you very much for being here.
Thank you all for approving the proclamation. As a future registered dietitian nutritionist, it is my pleasure to promote American Diabetes Month. More than 50% of Kern County residents have diabetes, prediabetes, or are at risk for diabetes. National spending on diabetes and its complications adds up to more than $245 billion a year. Lifestyle and personalized nutrition therapy decrease risk of diabetes and helps those with diabetes live a healthy life. Preventing complications such as heart disease, stroke, dialysis, blindness, and amputations are possible with controlled blood sugars, blood pressure, and cholesterol. It takes a community and a healthcare team working together to prevent and manage diabetes. Being aware of our diabetes risk is the first step. Next is accessing healthcare providers, and of course, eating healthy foods grown in Kern County while using paths in walkable neighborhoods for exercise. We can save money and lives with early individualized nutrition and health interventions. With the collaboration of registered dietitian nutritionists for personalized nutrition care and the other members of the medical team, we can deliver preventative services, promote health, and deliver positive health outcomes. By making healthy lifestyle choices a priority, we can be with our families, miss fewer days of work, reduce overall medical expenses, and enjoy our lives to the fullest. We do not want the seriousness of diabetes to be overlooked. By proclaiming November 2017 American Diabetes Month, let's inspire our county to prevent and treat diabetes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is yours. It's going to be folks. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number three. This is to proclaim November 27th through December 11th, 2017, as the 30th Anniversary Holiday Cottage Days in Kern County, and Supervisor Couch will make this presentation.
Thank you most on the proclamation.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. I normally don't spend this much time, but I'm going to ask your indulgence on this particular proclamation. I want to read the board letter, or most of it. Thirty years ago, the Department of Human Services recognized that children living in foster care during the holidays needed special attention. It was then that the Holiday Cottage was established by DHS to fulfill the wishes of children living in foster care. This year, 1,000 children living in Kern County foster and group homes received letters asking them to fulfill, excuse me, asking them what they hoped for during the holidays, and their wishes are already coming in. When the 30th Anniversary Holiday Cottage opens its doors on Monday, November 27th, these wishes will be placed with the child's first name and their age on the trees that line the walls of the cottage. During the 15 days, DHS will be located at the space donated by Rosedale Village. Volunteers representing local community groups will be there to greet members of our generous community and assist them in selecting a wish to fulfill, and they will be staffing the Holiday Cottage. The gift is then purchased by the local individuals and their families and returned to the cottage unwrapped. These gifts are delivered directly to the child in time for the holidays, and the spirit of generosity fills the Holiday Cottage. The community is invited to the grand opening celebration and ribbon cutting taking place on Monday, November 27th, at 11:00 a.m. at 2765 Callaway Drive, Suite 104. The Holiday Cottage will be open daily from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days a week, through November 11th, 2017. Children come into foster care through no fault of their own. They've been abused or neglected, ranging from newborns to 18 years old. Some are brothers and sisters, some have physical, mental, or emotional disabilities, most have suffered the trauma of being separated from their families. We celebrate that for 30 years, DHS and our community have come together to make sure that children living in foster care can celebrate during this time of the year. So I want to read this proclamation. I want to turn it over to Dina Murphy, our Director of Department of Human Services. And it's also my understanding that here in this building, the clerk of the board has hosted a Holiday Cottage Satellite Tree, going back at least 12 years. As a part of that department's celebration of 30 years of community generosity, they will be hosting a special Satellite Tree celebration today at 11:00 a.m. upstairs on the fifth floor. We have the wishes available here today for members of the board, our staffs, and any other departments that would like to join us. Members of the community are also welcome to access the Holiday Cottage wishes with us today. So let me read the proclamation very quickly and turn it over to Dina Murphy. It reads, "The Board of Supervisors, County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed November 27th through December 11th, 2017, as the 30th Anniversary Holiday Cottage Days in Kern County, and the recognition has been entered into the official board minutes, signed by our Honorable Chairman, Zach Scrivner, stated today, November 14th, 2017." Dina?
Thank you so much, Supervisor Couch. Chairman Scrivner and members of the board, I'd like to thank you so much for the recognition on the 30th anniversary for the Holiday Cottage. It's so very important that the children get something that they wish for around the holidays, particularly when they're not with their families. That was an incredible presentation, Supervisor Couch, and a great launching pad for me to start to recognize some of our partners, and you probably thought that we had Home Depot here to our side, this huge team of Santa's elves. I would like them to stand, and I'd like to recognize them. They literally took the floor out of the building we have, they took the ceiling out of the building, they put in a new floor, a new ceiling, they painted the entire building, and then they decorated it so that it would have the feeling of walking into a home, but pristine, clean, and all done for our families and our little angels that we're getting gifts for, and we thank you for coming along beside us to take care of the children and partnering with us this year. You guys all need hats and ears. Next, we have Shannon from IKEA, and Shannon, if you would stand. Shannon Harper, for five years, Shannon is representing IKEA. For five years, IKEA has come along the Department of Human Services, and they furnish the entire building to look like a home. So there'll be a sofa, tables, end tables, cabinetry, bookshelves, toys for the children, a Christmas tree that's fully decorated. It's like walking into a home, and the special thing about that, a child who does not know that they're getting this, that will be with us on that day, a foster child who's about to age out of the system and is actually moving into their own apartment, they get all of that the day of the ribbon cutting. It becomes theirs to take home, and we move it to their new apartment as they're moving out. So it's a very special gift that IKEA has given us year after year, and they run a satellite, and they fill dozens of, dozens of our wishes. So another very generous community partner coming up alongside us. Thank you. And of course, Supervisor Couch mentioned the Rosedale Shopping Center, and you'll be able to find that because it's right next door to See's Candy. That was special order, so really, that helps with landmarks. As Supervisor said, we're open for 15 days, but I wanted to share with you the partners that then manned this effort for us, and they include CASA, Junior League, Camping World, Home Depot, Kern County Fire, Donnie Youngblood of the Sheriff's Department and his team, Probation Superintendent of Schools, ABC 23, Phi Sigma Sigma, Kern Stop Meth Now Coalition, North Bakersfield Rotary, and Kern Federal Credit Union. Just so you see the size of the collaborative effort. And then other satellite operations include the Public Services Building, which will be next Tuesday. I know Jose Luis Gonzalez, who has actually led the Holiday Cottage for us in the past, is in the crowd and representing Lorelei Aviat today. Child Support will also have a satellite, ETR, and Chevron, among others. And then a big thank you to Heidi Carter Escudero, the lady in the hat to my left, who is coordinating this year along with her outreach team, and of course, our facilities folks, Reprographics, and all the, all the little angels it takes to get this effort off the ground to take care of the children. On the day of the event, we'll have the choir, the children's choir from Lettya Perpetual Help Church singing. It will prove to be a great event, but thank you for honoring this and for the incredible generosity from our community. We couldn't have done this for the last 30 years without these lovely families and our community members and businesses coming out and taking care of the children. So thank you so very much.
Happy birthday, Dina Murphy.
Thank you, yeah. All right. Thank you all. It's outstanding. Thank you so much. Fantastic project. Okay, next is Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. So at this time, I'll ask if there are any persons that would like to make a public presentation. I know we have at least one gentleman, but please come forward, and we ask that you state your name and observe our two-minute time limit.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Honorable Supervisors and Chair Scrivner. My name's Sonia Bennett, and I am a member of the SEIU bargaining team. I am here today to ask the board to help us reach an agreement with minimal impact to the general fund. Over the past nine years, Kern County employees have lost anywhere from $4,000 to $10,000 due to the lack of cost of living increases and rising inflation in Kern County, according to the Consumer Price Index. Over the past years, we have seen our coworkers leave the county at an alarming rate, workers leaving to work in neighboring counties for better wages and working conditions. We have done more with less, but the county is wasting money in continuously training new staff who are unable to pass probation. In 2016, 64% of the over 1,000 employees hired were terminated or released within their first year of employment. We are unable to recruit and retain quality employees when we are unable to invest in their success and in a working environment that is not one of intimidation for not meeting workload standards, the focus on quantity and not quality. Our proposal is not a cost of living increase. It seriously considers the county's current fiscal situation. We urge this board to help us reach an agreement that utilizes 1% to 2% of the county's fund balance. This will show workers that they are valued, and we can bridge a path forward for the next two years. We urge the board to support our workforce who has given so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. We are currently in negotiations with the SEIU union, and I would ask if CAO, OSOP, do you have any comments in regards to that?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, looking forward to getting an agreement.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Honorable Supervisors and Chair Scrivener. My name is Tiffany Sagbohan. That's T-I-F-F-A-N-Y-S-A-G-B-O-H-A-N, and I'm also our SEIU bargaining team. Over the last nine years, Kern County employees lost staff positions in departments that are critical to our, to the care of our community, positions in human services, Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, and General Services, all while demands for our services have increased. We have also seen inflation raise over 14% in the last nine years, while we, while we as workers saw zero cost of living for the sake of helping reduce the county's deficit. Over the past nine years, we have done more with less staff, while seeing increase in discipline for not meeting standards set by the state, and increased errors, which we are unable to reduce when working in an environment that does not focus on quality and demands quantity. This puts our community and the service we provide... This will show workers that they are valued, and we can bridge a path forward for the next two years. We urge the board to support our workforce who has given so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. We are currently in negotiations with the SEIU Union, and I would ask if CAO, All-Top, do you have any comments in regards to that?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, looking forward to getting an agreement.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Honorable Supervisors and Chair Scrivener. My name is Tiffany Sagbohan, that's T-I-F-F-A-N-Y-S-A-G-B-O-H-A-N. And I'm also our SEIU Bargaining Team. Over the last nine years, Kern County employees lost staff positions in departments that are critical to the care of our community, positions in Human Services, Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, and General Services, all while demands for our services have increased. We have also seen inflation raise over 14% in the last nine years, while we, as workers, saw zero cost of living for the sake of helping reduce the county's deficit. Over the past nine years, we have done more with less staff, while seeing increase in discipline for not meeting standards set by the state, and increased errors, which we are unable to reduce when working in an environment that does not focus on quality and demands quantity. This puts our community and the service we provide at risk. As a board, is trying to get past a physical situation that limits our ability to improve services as rapidly as our community requires, we are trying to look at ways to resolve our contracts with minimal impact to the general fund, while hoping workers see some kind of relief from the general fund deficit. Our members are social workers, recovery specialists who go out in the middle of the night or in unsafe neighborhoods alone to help our most vulnerable in our community during a critical time of need. We are animal control officers who are out in the middle of fires trying to rescue our animals from fire lines in coordination with the Fire Department and the Police Department. We look to you to help our Kern County workers move past the next two years of difficult times in hopes of seeing better physical times, when the county can invest in the workforce that has given so much.
Would you please bring your comments to a close, your time has expired?
Yes. It is time to raise together, and we count on you to bridge the path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Scrivener, board members. This is a scripture I'm going to share with you this morning.
Would you state your name, please?
Nadine Escalante. I'm so sorry, I forget. This is from the Book of Romans. "God works for the good of those who love Him, who has been called according to His purpose." As I listen to the conversations being heard this morning, we can see everybody's here because of the calling of what God has placed in our hearts. You are all chairmans or board members, and you're in a position of where you are leaders, great leaders in our community. I did see the news about the ACLU report, and I'm not going to talk about that because I don't think we need to always focus on ugly. So I wanted to talk about why Kern County is important and why we need to pay attention to the positive impact that we have. When I worked at probation, I had a particular child that was in my care. As I say, we raised him, and unfortunately, he made some poor mistakes and went to prison. And about three years ago, God spoke to my heart and asked me to reach out to this gentleman, and I've been writing to him ever since. And in these three years, I've actually been able to see a tremendous change in this child. He's a grown man, but I still say he's a child because of my eyes, he'll always be a child. But I was blessed to receive this letter last week that brought tears to my eyes. I contacted probation and shared the story with them because it was probation who pushed this child to get to be a better person. It might have taken us some time, a little bit, 10 years, but you know what, God works miracles. And in this letter, they were thanking Him for sharing His story as an inmate with youth about gang activity and how to stay away from it, why to stay away from it, and how it's affected His life. I just wanted to share with you, these are the positive things that Kern County is known for, and I hope that we can start to make sure that we start off 2018 on a very good, positive foot.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante.
So thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Madam Supervisor, Mr. Chair, fellow supervisors, Benedict J. Luban, Jude Benedict and Associates. First thing I'd like to differentiate my role today, I'm not here to lobby, but I'm here to consult and advise. I'd like to get it right. And I'm here to ask you to revisit the marijuana ban. I would like to bring experts from the California Medical Association, the Californian Hispanic Chambers of Commerce, the Black Chamber of Commerce, and the California Cannabis Industry Association to present facts. Some of you have been quoted that you've heard from your constituents, yeah, they're a small minority, but they're loud, and they're hyperbolic. I'd like to bring in these experts over time to speak with your staff, so maybe you can look at this issue sometime at the beginning of next year. The Department of Cannabis Control still has not come out with their final regulations. You've done an excellent EIR. It is the benchmark of the counties, and everybody's looking for your leadership. You've heard of your constituents? No, you haven't. You're looking right now at a co-chair of the McCain campaign. Conservatives have to come out of the marijuana closet, okay? Some of the facts is that if you ban marijuana, you're just going to proliferate the black market. You're not going to have tax income to educate and create awareness, nor are you going to have the money to enforce it. There's economic opportunity. From my background and expertise, I don't see marijuana growing here. I see industrial hemp for plastics and cement, and maybe we can use some of that oil production water instead of using it for agriculture. Most of all, it's public safety. Here, outside your jurisdiction, but in the city, we've had public executions. People cannot arm themselves. They have cash-only bases. You're responsible for that, you know it. People have been shot, laid down, face down on the ground and shot. And still, there is more. You Google and you see that. So I thank you, I thank you for your service, but please revisit this issue, you have a lot to gain economically. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public presentations? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to board member announcements or reports.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Gleason?
You know, since the NFL had that issue with kneeling, my wife and I have had many conversations about how loyal we are to the NFL, being a Patriots fan and stuff. And so bottom line is, my wife is not allowing me to watch football in my house. So I either sneak to the local pub and watch the game or something, whatever I do. But anyway, it's a pleasure today to be able to say something really positive about the game of football.
Here we go.
And that is that the Shaft of Generals dominated this week of Wasco, 47-7, and it was a, we have a new king of Highway 46. So I just want to make sure everybody knew the Shaft who whooped up on Wasco, and it was a pleasure. Thank you. Sorry Supervisor Couch.
You didn't have the courage of your conviction before the game, but the last time I won this, you had to pay a charity in Wasco, correct?
We'll correct that next year.
No, I'm happy to pretend that we had the vote. You give me the name of a charity in Shaftor, and I'll make sure I make a proper donation.
Thank you Supervisor, we'll take you up on that.
Any other requests, board member announcements or reports, seeing none? Okay, thank you very much, guys. Moving on then to the next item on our agenda is item 15. This is under Employers Training Resource. This is an education and workforce development presentation, which continues our monthly presentations on fantastic educational programs that are happening in Kern County. And so who is going to start us off on this discussion?
Mr. Chairman, it'll be Bill Stevenson with Employers Training Resource. Good morning, board members. Who's got the clicker? As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, this is our monthly report. We have with us today the Wonderful Agriculture Career Prep Program. And I have two representatives from the Wonderful Company, Naomi Denoso, who's a Senior Vice President for Wonderful Education, and Ricardo Escobar, who's the Executive Director for the Wonderful College Prep Academy. Before I turn it over to some statistics that kind of really struck me, what the Wonderful Company has accomplished. Their efforts to provide the skill gap for up to 37% of unemployed youth in this county is staggering. Their innovation programs have reached over 55,000 students across 83 schools, I mean, within 24 school districts, and the company has awarded more than 1,500 college scholarships and incentives, as well as 1,300 teachers' grants. When I saw that, I thought, wow, that is somebody who's very proactive. And with that, I will turn it over to Naomi and Ricardo.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good morning, thank you so much. So our mission at the Wonderful Company, as it pertains to education, is to enable a lifetime of career opportunities by significantly increasing the number of young people who are awarded college degrees in the Central Valley. Today, we're going to talk about three main flagship programs that we do in order to accomplish this mission. And we'll start with Ricardo Escobar, our Executive Director of a Charter School, Wonderful College Prep Academy.
Again, my name is Ricardo Escobar, and I am the Executive Director of Wonderful College Prep Academy. As a kid who grew up in Delano, staying connected to my Central Valley roots and giving back in such a remarkable way is an amazing gift I am grateful for every day. Our number one goal is to continue the tradition of excellence that is the foundation at Wonderful College Prep Academy. We cannot be more proud, we could not be more proud of our latest academic achievement. Last year, our high school ranked number three out of all high schools in Kern County on the state test for both English and in math. And within Delano's high schools, we ranked number one in both English and math. Academy students in Delano and Lost Hills learn in a nurturing environment with qualified and caring teachers, who are not only able to meet standards, but also provide students with the time and differentiated support they need to grow into passionate learners and confident leaders. The Academy offers academic programs with a personalized learning philosophy in mathematics and literacy instruction as early as in elementary school, with weekly arts and hands-on science instruction in innovative and high-tech classrooms, using several methods aimed to maximize their learning. Combined with our AgSTEM music and art program, our middle school students learn creative ways to express themselves, develop the skills they need to compete for the jobs of the future. Our high school students have an opportunity to earn up to 30 to 60 units of college credit by the time they graduate from high school. Students can choose from two distinct pathways, agriculture business or liberal arts. Both pathways are designed to prepare students for four-year universities while exposing them to advanced career possibilities. We also nurture a healthy lifestyle with a full-service dining hall, with free and wholesome homemade meals to every student every day. Today, our Delano campus currently serves 1,100 students made up of grades Kinder through first grade and sixth to 12th grade. By year 2019, we will be TK through 12th grade with 1,500 students. Our students in Delano primarily reside in Delano, McFarland, Wasco, Shaftor, and Earlymark. The Academy in Lost Hills currently serves 100 students in TK through second grade. By 2023, we will be at full buildout, TK through 12th grade with 500 students. And now Dr. Denoso will describe our Ag Prep and college scholarship programs.
So our second flagship program is an Ag Prep program that the Wonderful Company launched with several community college and high school partners throughout the Central Valley four years ago. It is a three-way partnership where the community college, in this case, we partner with Bakersfield College, Reedley College, and West Hills College, deliver college courses on high school campuses starting the summer before ninth grade all the way through 12th grade, so that our Ag Prep students will graduate from high school with an associate of science degree in either Ag Business, Plant Science, or Ag Mechanics. And this is now taking place at seven high schools throughout the Central Valley. Wasco High School, Wonderful College Prep Academy, Sangar High School, we're the first three, and Avenal High School. And then we've added Reedley Middle College, Mendota High School, and Washington Union High School in West Fresno. And then the Wonderful Company, and sorry, the high schools make sure that these students are co-horted all four years while they're in high school. So they're in a small community within their larger high schools. They get all of the wraparound services they need to not only pass all of the high school courses that are required for entry into a four-year college, but to pass 60 units of college courses while they're in high school. And then the Wonderful Company provides work-based learning, a sequence of work-based learning experiences all throughout those four years of high school, starting with industry conventions in ninth grade, full-day job shadowing opportunities at multiple companies throughout the Central Valley. Not only Wonderful Companies, but we've added other Ag Partners like Olam International, Ruiz Foods, and others, who also provide these job shadowing opportunities. By the summer before 12th grade, every one of these students gets a full-paid internship at one of these companies in the summer. So by the time they start 12th grade, they're not only thinking about what college are they going to go to, but they've had real hands-on work experience and can be more serious about what they want to major in when they go to college and what their career aspiration is. For about two-thirds of our first graduating class this year, it is in the stems. Only about a quarter of them are specifically in agriculture. But two-thirds of these kids want to major in STEM careers, engineering and medical health science careers, and the other third have chosen more liberal arts and so forth. We expect that by 2020, when all seven high schools have a senior class, we will have 330 students each year going through Ag Prep, with approximately 250 of them, 75% of them meeting all of the requirements to earn their associate of science degree. And based on the survey data we have from this first graduating class this year, we think about 80% of them, or 200 students, will go on to a four-year college, many of whom will start as a sophomore or junior in college. And about 50 will decide to either postpone that bachelor's degree and go straight to work. And the Wonderful Company is guaranteeing a one-year work fellowship for $35,000 a year to any student who finishes this Ag Prep program and wants to go straight into work, into the Ag industry. We're very, very proud. As I've said, early indications show that about 70% of the students who started four years ago are meeting all the requirements for the associate of science, and we expect about 80% of them to go on to a four-year college. Happy to come back in the summer to give you that final count. And then finally, I'll close with one of our flagship programs that's been around for over 20 years, which is our college scholarship program. We started 20 years ago by offering a college scholarship, a five-year renewable college scholarship, up to $30,000 for all children of our employees in the Central Valley. And we've now extended that scholarship to also make it available for all graduates of our charter school, Wonderful College Prep Academy, and that's a four-year renewable scholarship. And this year, the ResNex have extended that scholarship to all graduates of our Ag Prep program at our seven high schools throughout the valley. So you will see in 2013, we are awarded roughly 75 college scholarships. This year, we're projected to award 200 scholarships, with 90% of those scholars going on to a four-year college. And the best news of all, going back to our mission of increasing the number of youth who earn a bachelor's degree in the Central Valley, is that you'll see there nationally for first-generation college-bound kids, only about 11% that enter college actually are awarded a bachelor's degree. In Kern County, that number's about 15%. Statewide, it's 31%. We are on pace for this next spring to have 70% of our scholars earn a bachelor's degree. With that, I conclude my presentation and open up for any questions the board may have.
That's outstanding, and we definitely would like to have you back in the summer for those updated numbers. I see Supervisor Perez does have a, has punched in, and also Supervisor Couch, I wanted to ask if they'd like to ask their questions now or make their comments before I go to the public. I think we have, do we have anyone else in the audience that wants to speak to this item? Okay, I was thinking maybe Mr. Ogblag would, but okay, Supervisor Perez.
Well, Noemi, it's very nice to see you. It has been some time. You'll recognize Mr. Turnip Seed in the back there. You may recall when we launched our public-private partnership in figuring out how we can be more integral in improving the outcomes, in particular of young people in the valley, but for our workforce in general. And you were there, and you advised us, and you have an absolutely extraordinary And you were there and you advised us, and you have an absolutely extraordinary resume and educational background yourself. I consider you to be one of the top consultants in education, hands-down, period, that I've ever come across. And so I am so grateful for what you're doing in the Central Valley, the investments you're making, and frankly, the way in which you have guided Mr. Turnipseed and myself because of your model of dual enrollment. Mr. Turnipseed and I, along with our President of BC, launched a dual enrollment program at Arvin High, a small pilot project that we're working with BC on, and it's now being extended throughout Kern High School District, largest high school district in the state. So I really want to personally thank you for setting the standard so high, for desiring and achieving, you know, really the highest results that we could possibly wish for, because we know that when businesses and industry is citing and looking for great places to invest and take risk, the workforce quality is absolutely paramount in that discussion. So I am so grateful for you. You are such a rock star. You are as good as it gets, and we are so lucky that we have you to advise us in this new chapter, frankly. You're really making a meaningful impact, your entire team, of course, in the lives of young people here and also families, as they strive to lift themselves out of poverty. So thank you. God bless you. Keep up the good work and keep us posted. It's very, very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, pardon me.
We're definitely, would like to invite any of you who want to come to visit the program and see it firsthand, and we've learned a lot of lessons along the way. So any way that we could guide your program, just let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Couch?
It's entirely inadequate, but I just want to say thank you for all that you have done, what you described today, but also your Wonderful Company's adoption, basically, of the Lost Hills community and just everything that they're doing there. I'd like you to bring that back to them and convey that if you would. Thank you very much for being here today and for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Supervisor Maggard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to congratulate both of you on the Wonderful Company for the, this really is extraordinary. A few years ago, I had the pleasure of talking with Mrs. Resnick when she was beginning to brainstorm about what could we do? How could we affect the lives of the people and their children who work for us? And it really is remarkable to see all that has transpired since then. And all the credit goes to you guys and the vision that you've had and that she's had and the commitment to see it through. So please extend our congratulations to her, and I admire the depth and breadth of what you guys are doing to help change the lives of the families that work for you guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Gleason.
Yeah, I just want to echo everything everybody said. Thank you very much. I'd also like to schedule some type of tour of your facility as soon as, whenever it's convenient for you guys. I'd love to go up there and spend some time.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, that was an outstanding presentation, and thank you for the marvelous work that you're doing in the community. So we will, there is no board action required, it was just to hear the presentation, and so we look forward to next month with, when ETR comes back with yet another outstanding example of efforts for education in our county. But then going to move on to item 21 under Public Health Services. This is a presentation on efforts on diabetes awareness and disease management in Kern County. And we have Bryn Kerrigan, our Assistant Director of Public Health Services, with us. Ms. Kerrigan, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bryn Kerrigan. I am your Assistant Director of Public Health. I have with me multiple important people in the audience that I would like to quickly introduce. I have Abigail Romo, a supervising public health nurse, Govie Sidhu, a public health nurse, Felix Mendoza, public health aide, Martha Nahara, a public health nurse, Russ Hastings, supervising public health nurse, Chad Casto, public health project specialist, and Michelle Kieroso, Director of Public Health Nursing. These staff are all responsible for implementing the diabetes interventions that I'm going to describe for you shortly. As you heard from the proclamation earlier this morning, November is National Diabetes Awareness Month, and today, November 14th, is World Diabetes Day. Diabetes is a disease in which the body's ability to produce or respond to the hormone insulin is impaired, resulting in abnormal metabolism of carbohydrates and elevated levels of glucose in the blood. Glucose cannot be used for energy, and it builds up in the bloodstream. This can lead to very serious health complications, including vision loss or blindness, nerve damage leading to loss of feeling in feet, poor blood circulation making it hard to heal from infections, hypertension, stroke, and kidney failure. More than 114 million people in the United States have diabetes or prediabetes. That equates to more than one-third of our nation. Kern County ranks 58 out of 58 counties in California for deaths due to diabetes, meaning you're more likely to die from diabetes in Kern County than any other county in California. In response to these staggering statistics, the Kern County Public Health Services Department launched two pilot projects this past year aimed at helping our community better manage their diabetes. Both of these programs have achieved major success. One program is aimed at diabetes in children. Using a research grant awarded by the Lucille Packard Foundation, this program equips children with skills and knowledge for the transition into adulthood. The department collected an initial assessment to determine areas where children with diabetes and their families needed the most help. Because there was no existing curriculum aimed at children with the disease, the department created a curriculum using the initial assessment results tailored to fit the specific needs of the families we serve. The program is five weeks long with one two-hour session each week. Each class includes a cooking demonstration of replacement foods appropriate for diabetics and diabetes self-management education component. The final class includes a pharmacy class led by Joseph Tran, a pharmacist with Walgreens, and we partner with Kern Family Healthcare throughout the program, which allows the families to build a relationship with them. This is important as many of the kids will transition to the health plan once they age out of the department's California Children's Services system. Twelve families have participated and have demonstrated a 17% knowledge-based increase upon graduation from the program. The second program is aimed at diabetes in adults. Using referrals of diabetic patients from Kern Family Healthcare, this program is aimed at providing one-on-one comprehensive diabetes self-management education in the patient's home, as well as linking patients with a medical home and other appropriate quality-of-life services. Patients are taught the benefits of physical activity and appropriate food choices. Program participants are provided a diabetes cookbook that I brought generously provided by Supervisor Couch. Twenty-three patients were enrolled in the program during the pilot project. The majority of the patients enrolled in the program indicated that life stress often impedes their diabetic care. Hemoglobin A1C is a blood test that is used to gauge how well an individual is managing their diabetes. This blood test reflects an individual's average blood sugar level for the prior two to three months. An individual without diabetes will have an A1C of around 5%. An A1C level of 5.7% or higher indicates prediabetes or diabetes. After our interventions, patients participating in the program saw an average of 0.9% decrease in hemoglobin A1C levels, an average reduction in body mass index of 0.5, and an average reduction of total cholesterol of 38, all significant improvements. Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I would like to share with you one story about a patient who completed our adult program. The 68-year-old patient, Dan Smith, who is currently in the audience, back row, has given us permission to share his story. When Mr. Smith was enrolled in the program, he lived by himself in a one-bedroom house with stairs leading up to his front door. Mr. Smith was unable to leave his house on his own because he was unable to walk without the assistance of his walker, and he required the assistance of another person to maneuver the front stairs of his house. He was eating frozen meals and cup of noodles for basically all of his meals. Mr. Smith was freezing his insulin, which is not an appropriate way to store it. The only way for Mr. Smith to see a doctor was if his brother was able to take him or if he called 911. He had never had a dental or an eye exam. The owner of the house that Mr. Smith was living in gave him a 60-day eviction notice, and he had nowhere else to go. Govie, the public health nurse assigned to Mr. Smith, and Felix, the public health aide, were able to help him find a place to live on his limited income that provided three hot meals a day and group activities such as yoga and bowling. They took Mr. Smith to his doctor's appointments and taught him how to advocate for himself. They found a pharmacy that delivers all of his medications, and Govie taught him how to properly store them. Mr. Smith now has a dentist and an eye doctor, schedules his own appointments, and arranges transportation for himself. He now walks 45 minutes to an hour each day and checks his own blood sugar every morning. Mr. Smith sees his doctor every three months, and his hemoglobin A1C level has decreased from 13.1% to 8.4%. When we asked Mr. Smith how he felt about the program, he stated, "They helped me a lot. If it weren't for Govie and Felix, I don't know where I would be. I'd be lost." Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that concludes my presentation on the Public Health Services Department's diabetes management efforts in Kern County.
Well, Ms. Kerrigan, thank you so much for that report. Such a serious issue, and it's heartening to hear stories like Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, thank you for allowing us to hear your story and for sharing that, and also to Govie and Felix for the wonderful work that they did, and all the folks at Public Health for their efforts. I will ask if there are any other members of the audience that have any comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board. Supervisor Perez?
Thank you, Chairman. What an incredible story. Mr. Smith, hats off to you. Happy to see you here today. I think it's also a sign of your improved health and well-being, and I really appreciate the thoughtful manner that you have brought this issue before the board, demonstrating that connecting the dots and helping people help themselves saves taxpayers' money, improves the well-being of a fellow brother of ours in this community, a fellow citizen in this community, and is overall very good for Kern County. And I am really moved by this story and the thoughtful manner by which you have presented this to the public and to the board, how much sense it makes to connect these dots and help people help themselves. Thank you so very much. Keep up the good work. This is very exciting. Any way that I can be of help to you, I would like to be so. So thank you. Keep up the good work. Hats off to you, Mr. Smith. Keep up the good work.
Yes, Ms. Kerrigan, I think we would all echo those comments as far as anything that we can continue to do as a board to support your efforts. Please let us know. And I don't see any other requests from other members of the board, so that does bring us to the conclusion of our agenda this morning. We do have three items to consider in closed session. One item under the County Administrative Office, item 23, and items 24 and 25 under County Council. So this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session. We are adjourned.